You guys welcome. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the Amazon Facebook page, correct? Thank you. Thanks for your right to announce the board of members in attendance. In the room, we have myself, Roger Turey, Raul Porens, Sheila Kelly, Kristen Carney, and Laura Webster. Online, we have Don Capello, Liz Saul, Bella Gorman, Nick Poirier, Samini Chanthapat, Joe Stigford, Zach Oglesby, and Ben Hippe. All members in attendance, thank you for attending. I'm looking for a timekeeper to keep us on schedule. We have a number of votes to get through and important announcements afterwards.
I can handle that.
Zach, keep us on schedule, please. We've recorded attendance and guests. Public comment, Liz, do we have anybody reaching out for public comment?
Yes, we did have one person. Rebecca, are you on the call?
She's in place.
Oh, is she in person? Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Right into it. Microphone. No, I'm just a girl.
Yes, Liz.
Thank you, hi.
Please just start by stating your name and the topic that you wish to.
Hi, so my name is Rebecca Dougherty. Thank you for having me. And I'm sure I talk about community. Just some of you who may know me or may not, just see my name on the chat a lot. My name is Rebecca Dougherty, as I said. And I'm the current co-president of the AMCPTO. I've demonstrated a big commitment to the community, a long time volunteering for things like after prom, as well as sponsoring your. So I really am appreciative and happy to have a class of 2023 and 2025 students here. I think so. So I just wanted to touch about a couple of things that I've heard as a member of the community and someone that people come to because of my long time commitment. So several parents have come to me from students, the students in all grades, asking about the Disney's trip and hoping to have it, have a real collaborative discussion about reinstating it. Solutions are possible, but a real discussion to collaborate and come up with those solutions would be appreciated. The PTO board did attempt to do this compared to other PTO members because everyone that has a child here at AMSA as part of the PTO and supportive ways to ensure this trip is accessible in honors what the students have requested. The class of 2023 actually started a petition to keep the trip. And as far as I know, many would still like it to happen, but in order for this to happen, the conversation must occur very soon. Specifically speaking to the class of 2023, that these students will be the only class at AMSA, as far as I know, that will not get to go on the Washington DC trip. And the Disney trip was a beacon of light for so many of them. It should be noted that some students from this class have reported. They feel labeled as a class with a reputation, and this was reinforced just a few weeks ago by a teacher. I share this because it seems very clear to me that in their view, they are seen in a negative light, and this image should not be attributed to them or any class at AMSA. So we need to be mindful of the mental health of our children as they have experience and grow up in a time like no other. Our actions and our words speak volumes to them. All of our students deserve the chance to be seen as individuals and should have their voices heard. If we are truly touting community as one of our core values, it starts with the communication. And I do know that there are parents of students with other grades who will be continuing to discuss this topic, and we're always happy to have conversation and collaboration. And I really appreciate your time, and thank you all so much.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Other people online wishing to address the board? Does the board wish to flag items for discussion for public speak?
I would say yes.
Is your take good?
The topic was.
Right, thank you. Then we get to that at the bottom of the agenda. So moving on to the vote section of the agenda, we have quite a few votes. This is our annual meeting, which includes the election of officers, and we have trustee members as well. The first vote is to approve the minutes from the 26th May meeting. Take a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second from Zach.
Oh, that's Ben, I think.
From Ben. I do, is role participation, all the votes to be, roll call votes. I'll start with people in the room and then, you know, I'll start with people in the room and then work down this list. Roger, yes. Raul?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Porens?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Sheila? Maybe that's straight. It's going to be a long way to do that. Don?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Motion passes to me honestly. Next, I'd like to pass the time to Don Capello to discuss the executive director search firm selection.
Thank you, Roger. I am going to pass it to Raul to provide the summary, and he's got some detail in front of him to share.
How can you hear me on live?
It's a little difficult to hear you.
How about now? Is that any better?
Yes, on my side.
Okay, I'm going to try to stay as close to the microphone. So can I share something on the screen through Zoom? You allow sharing? Because what we wanted to do was just share an update on, an update on how we went about doing this, maybe to recap a little bit after we have a new concept with Ellen for the next year, and she announced her plans to move to a second. You know, the screen? To move to a different role starting, you know, just for the one year. And after, after this school year, we started planning on how we're going to go about choosing the next executive director. The first thing we did was establish a task force for picking a firm that was going to help us with this. And as you may remember from the previous board meeting, we agreed that we wanted to hire a search firm as opposed to trying to do without any external help, just because we want to make sure that the number one goal, other than finding the best executive director perhaps, obviously it's not this role, is to make sure that the process itself is transparent and that we include as many voices and as many stakeholders of the school as possible, and that everybody feels that their voice was heard in the process. So we did reach out to multiple firms. We received four proposals that the task force has reviewed, and we interviewed all those four firms. And what we're coming up today from the task forces is a summary of those discussions with folks interviews. I know that the proposals for the top two firms that we narrowed it down to were shared with the board. So we're going to just share some comments on what we heard from those firms and then before our recommendation, we can move forward. So like I mentioned, we received four proposals. We sat down with each one of those firms. We actually tried to make sure that we were asking the same kinds of questions, and those questions had to do with particularly the process. So again, we wanted to make sure the process was, but we're thinking of whether they're proposing how the search is going to go through, was going to include as many stakeholders as possible. So that's one of the things that we made a point of reminding the firms that was our objective, and they showed us how they would do that. Of course, other important things like the cost and the timeline of the search were warm. We actually were happy to hear that they thought we were going about this correctly. It's timing, you know, giving us the opportunity to have this year for conducting the search while we're still having an executive director. There's supposed to be questions to this process, which happens still as we speak. So we're good in that regard, and that's a consistent thing that we got from all firms. They also provided references on other schools or other districts that they have conducted searches for. At the same time, in the industry, there's a lot of changes and a lot of people moving around, so I think suffice to say it will be an interesting search because the employment rate of people that are qualified for this job is basically zero. So we're basically looking for somebody that's doing something similar somewhere else and trying to get them to see their good bit perhaps. But that's why part of the reason it's important to get a search firm to help us with that. So we reached out to all those references. We narrowed it down to two firms, so what you see on the table is the two firms that we basically narrowed it down to. One of them is EOS, which is a consultant that has worked with AMSA in the past. John Tarman is somebody that has worked with Dr. Lewis when he started working as an executive director. One of the benefits of working with John would be that he is familiar with AMSA. He was around when Dr. Lewis started working as an executive director and knows the history of what has happened with the school. He presented a very specific timeline on how the search could happen. And that's very reassuring because, again, we want to make sure that we are able to find a candidate and go through negotiations in time for the following school year. And I know there's some discussion that we've had about how much of the search is going to help us, influence our, the, how do we ask for, how do we write the script through? And a big part of that, which I think every firm has a certain component of that, was maybe, this is my terminology, organizational assessment, which is basically having them as a third party talk to the different stakeholders, try to understand where AMSA is. And I know we've talked in the past about a SWAN analysis, you know, strength, I think this is an opportunity, threats. That isn't necessarily completely what an organizational assessment is part of a search, but it is something that would come. What the firm would do is actually conduct interviews and talk to the different stakeholders to make sure that they're influenced, it kind of leader that we'd be looking for. So it's kind of a positive thing that a search firm will help us with that because that could also help us influence our strategic planning program, which I know we've been talking about it, you know, updating our goals, et cetera. So that was actually a very positive thing from all parts of the topic. But John, again, had very specific feedback on that, how that should happen, how he would look for us. Compared to that, the K-12 search group was the other one that we can narrow it down to. Again, they also have a very strong organizational assessment proposal and how they would do that. They shared with us a lot of details about how they create a break or a way to make sure the selection process is fair and objective and that we can show the transparency that we're looking for. And the timeline was similar. There's one thing that we'd like is that without them talking to each other, they kind of all agree on how we were going about doing this over time. If there's one thing that actually they run up as, you know, how or, you know, why would you not come up to report with us or if there's any difference in opinions on how the process should go, it's like K-12 actually said that it, and then ultimately the decision of the next executive director is the board's. So the board chooses to hire an executive director. They were recommending that during the process, there could be at least part of the process that is conducted with only board members and not all the members of the search committee. And that was, they had a lot of reasons for that, and, you know, I can explain more details if anybody is serious about why they said that. But that was one of the things that we thought, we want to make sure that everybody feels that everybody is part of the search, that it's part of the process. If it reaches a point where it becomes, you know, conflict of interest, like when we get to negotiations, et cetera, that we definitely can make an exception. But as part of going through the interviews and searching to write candidates and all that, we wanted to make sure that everybody that's part of the search committee was equally involved in it. So that's one of the things that they say, if you don't agree with that approach, then you're probably not the right firm. But again, that's one of the things that we wanted to highlight as kind of difference. All the firms had a guarantee, which means that if we hired, and hopefully this is not something that we don't have to deal with, but it's worth considering, having a tendency. If we hired somebody and 12 months later it doesn't work out, you know, we are creating hard ways, they decide to leave, they would repeat the search of no possibility to have stuff. Again, not something you're supposed to have to deal with, but it's worth noting that that was part of the proposals, and that's the typical thing for the search firms. Cost wise, they were all very similar. John Tarman is, as you can see, lower. And again, the details of the proposals were shared very well before. So before I share what the search firm selection task force recommends, are there any questions for more? Questions that you want to ask, or Don, if I missed anything? Sure, I know Jill, you're also involved.
No, I think it, I mean, I think it was a great process. You know, we really focused on finding a firm that had a good feel on, obviously, the education and the industry right now. I think that the two that we narrowed it down to either could do a great job, and I think that the local connections EOS could provide us, especially, you know, in terms of Massachusetts and knowing the laws and having a candidate pool locally, as well as being able to have further outreach. I just think that he just edged out the other firm, but we met a lot of great folks. We had a lot of really great conversations, took notes. It's been a really, I think it's been a really great process that we can share what we learned with AMSA for the better.
Final question. How big in size is EOS and K-12, and what were those success stories in AMSA and Massachusetts or charter schools?
So I'm trying to make sure I didn't say this wrong. Don, who wasn't that working with the kind of Pacific Rim, so Don?
Yes, so EOS.
That was the K-12.
Yeah, so EOS worked with Krista McAuliffe. They did a lot of work with, hold on, I can run through the list if folks didn't have a chance to look at it, but they had the most experience in Massachusetts by far.
They also worked with a local Montessori school and a, the ones that we had were the charter school in Chicago as well.
As far as size, I believe K-12 was a third firm with more of a national footprint than EOS is. We were actually kind of going back and forth whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, right? So one of the questions I had was their access to the data pool, or were their sources better, right to the right candidates? Like I said, it's the top market, but probably already happened to those connections. I don't see an evident, you know, it's a tough choice because all the firms kind of present in the same perspective, probably the source of candidates. So I think the size, it's hard to assess how big the firms are compared to the town or whatnot. I do feel that EOS is a smaller firm versus K-12, but I wouldn't know how to quantify.
Thank you, that answers my questions.
Now, did you mean in one, if it's smaller is better, or if it's bigger is better?
Well, I guess the one question I was having was, is the firm big enough that should one of the people, one of the partners of the firm leave, would they still be sufficient to support AMSA? Okay, is the one person firm? Or is it so big, is, on the other end of the spectrum, are they so big that AMSA is a fly on the wall and not getting their, not getting their critical focus? So there's somewhere.
Yeah, neither, neither one is a one person firm. So EOS, although it's smaller, it has multiple people involved.
Thanks, Liz. That answers my questions.
Do you have any other questions?
When you did the evaluation, did one or the other standout just have more experience with school like AMSA in terms of size and that's charter school that it's, it's?
They all had samples of charter schools, and from what I can tell, those schools have various learnings around that. Of course, you can say that AMSA is unique and our child is a great unit, but the searches that all the firms brought us, examples, successful searches and the preferences that we got back from all of them were very positive. And I was actually concerned at the beginning, thinking that we were going to get generic nonprofit search firms. And some of them didn't have a bigger nonprofit practice than the people we talked to were specifically focused on charter schools. So there were a lot of examples that sounded to be like schools similar to AMSA. So as far as experience, I think they're all, that's why I say it's a tough choice. I don't think we can make a proper choice here because all the firms had a lot of great things to break to table. We actually took a little announcement, they're recommending how the process should go or not. So even the search process itself was helping, I mean, the selection process for a search firm was helping us understand how the search process should go. So I don't know if that answers the question, but everybody had examples. So none of them stood out having been more successful.
Seems as though the detail on K-12 search firm looked more academic nature versus just what they provided.
Yeah. I don't know. I know, Liz, were you the one that checked on reference for EOS? I forget. I don't know if you.
Yes, I did. Actually, whoever was talking before, if you can just talk a little closer to the microphone, it's hard for us to hear online. What, what, sorry, Raul, what was that question?
Her question was about whether any firm stood out as having more experience with schools, schools similar to AMSA, because she felt from the proposal that EOS was more generic nonprofit than EOS.
No, I mean, the two that I spoke to for, for references were both charter schools. So they had two charter schools as well as a, a Montessori school, which I never heard back from, but I did speak to both the charter schools that interacted with, that had hired EOS for their searches, and they were both extremely positive on the experience that they had with EOS, one of which specified that EOS really was able to convince her that they needed to use a search firm, and she would never not use a search firm and would, would go with EOS and EOS in the future. She also mentioned that John and his team, they were actually able to close the deal with the executive director that Karos wanted. They did not, the person did not want to accept the position, but John actually was able to negotiate to a point where the person did accept the position and is still leaving the school today.
Any other questions? So our recommendations from the selection committee is move forward with EOS. Again, that's mostly driven by experience and AMSA background and history and they've already worked with us, as well as the flexibility of the process itself. You had a lot of comments on how we can go about making sure that everything works well on the search committee, but then also the board decision and how we structure that. So, yeah. So I don't know about that, so I don't know. Anything, Don, Liz, Jill? Anders was also involved in the search selection.
Raul, I'm not able to hear you very well. Sorry. You started talking about a recommendation, but I'm not sure I caught on with everything you said.
Just bottom line, we're recommending EOS as the selection. So is it vote forward unless anybody has any other questions or suggestions for discussion? And just to be clear on what would happen, you know, once there were votes on selecting the firm, we'd notify all of them, what choice, and we would start working pretty much immediately on, on planning the next steps and kicking it off with the search committee, which is very nice.
What has EOS done for us in the past? What is our association, association history with them?
Yeah, John worked as a coach for Anders when he started as an executive director. So that was what, four years ago?
He actually, he came to us via Board on Track. He was recommended from Board on Track when we were doing the transition. So when we transitioned Dr. McCleary out and Dr. Lewis in, they, he assisted with both of those transitions.
And if I can just add, one of the things I really liked about EOS, not to say that any of the other firms couldn't do this, but since he's right in Milton, one, you know, so he sort of presented to us, you know, how he would even start, which is to spend some time on the campus, getting to know what we have going on, you know, talking to folks. I mean, there'll be a much more detailed plan, but just, it just seemed that John really could provide us with that local, you know, just with that local connection and having already been, he knows Anders, he knows Ellen, he knows AMSA. I think that's what sort of pushed him to the top for me. And again, we interviewed a lot of qualified firms, but I just loved his entry plan and the fact that he's local and can be right on campus. I think that'll be really great for everyone. You know, we talk about goals of transparency and inclusion, and I think that those are the types of things that will help us attain those goals.
Any questions? So if they make a motion for Raul to proceed with EOS as the, as our, as our executive search firm?
I'll be ready for a motion. I just want to rush it. If there's any further expression. And that with motion for AMSA to select EOS as the firm for conducting the search for next executive director.
We can go second. Second for Raul. On the call, Raul. Raul Porens?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Sheila? Don?
Yes.
Bella?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes to me honestly. Thank you, everyone who participated in our executive search firm selection. Round of applause for that group.
Roger, I just have a clarifying question. I just can't remember. Do we need to now authorize members to enter into the contract? And I apologize for not bringing that up before. I just didn't think of it till today.
We, we do not because we already have that number in the budget.
In the budget, great. Thank you for checking, uh, thank you for clarifying.
But the contract is between the firm and the school?
Right, the firm and the school will now, they'll now negotiate a contract, and if it's outside of budget, we will come back and convene, but the number I saw there was within the budget. Excellent question. Next, next up is a vote to accept the faculty nomination from the faculty. It is a one-year term for the next school year, 2022 to 2023. The nomination by the faculty is Zachary Prescott, previously known as Zachary Oglesby. That would be his marriage. Congratulations, Zach, first, and congratulations on your nomination. Look for a more motion to accept the faculty nomination. Move by Laura.
Second.
You got there first.
And Sheila, wait.
And Sheila, may I ask a question, please? So what you just did, because it's different from what I have here, you had, this was for the parent rep and the faculty rep.
This is the faculty rep.
Just faculty rep.
Each, each is a separate, separate vote. See how we're getting that.
Oh, I see it up here. Okay, you went down there. All right. Sorry about that.
So that was a motion by, second by Sheila. Raul.
Yes.
Samini.
Yes.
Sheila. Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
I will abstain.
Abstain, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Zach. And thank you for your, next year, thank you for this year and your next year of service.
I'm keeping my options.
Next up is accepting the parent rep nomination from the PTO for Laura Burgis. She is nominated for a one-year term starting July 2022 to June of '23. For a motion to accept the PTO's nomination.
Roger, Laura's on the, Laura's on. Do you, can I just, can she give a five-minute introduction on herself?
Uh, it's funny, yes, hang, hang on, Laura. I'll have you do that introduction during the.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
She, okay, Laura, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off until later in the agenda.
Perfect.
Okay.
For the introduction.
For the introduction.
We're right in the middle of all the votes. Wouldn't give you fair, fair time, would give you a chance to collect your thoughts. So, hang on there, Laura. Thank you for joining us first. So. Did I get?
Uh, I, uh, this is Dawn. I made the motion.
Okay, Dawn and?
I'll take.
Laura. Laura, second.
Got it.
Good, sir.
Yeah.
All right. Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we got, we see the nomination for, I'm going to pass the good time at this point to Sheila to take over as our governance chair for our trustee approvals in our board elections.
Okay, so first with regard to trustee, I have pleasure of recommending that we vote accept Bill Forman for a full term as a full trustee. I want to be available to serve as our parent rep for the last year and has brought a lot of financial knowledge to the table and always has great questions, but I would be forward to working with her for a full term. So I have the governance recommendation that we can accept Bill as our full trustee. So moved, there is a verboten. Okay, so moved.
Second, Raul.
Okay, I do the vote. The vote's off. Okay.
I've got Liz.
Okay.
I, 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 Sheila, you. You can, you can run the rest of the, I won't do the vote since I've got the checklist too. Same order as before. Raul, yeah. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila. Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Ellen Stein.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations. And we thank you, Bill.
All right, so our next approval is for Ryan Jarrett for a second term. This will run July 2022 to June 2024 due to bylaw restrictions on consecutive years of service. That's when Roger will get his seven years. And as you all know, Roger has served as our chair and cannot with the more criticals, but governance recommendation is to approve for that two-year term.
Yes.
So moved.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, where, where am I? Second term, okay.
Raul, second amendment.
So that was.
Raul, yes. Samini.
Who was the, who made the motion?
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
I abstain. Motion passes with one extension.
Excuse me, who made the first mo, who made the motion?
Ed Morin.
Raul, okay, Ed Morin.
Sheila, sorry.
Closer. I usually do not require information.
An ad hoc audio system going here.
All right, our next vote is on Raul Porres for a second term. This will be a three-year term running from July 2022 to June 2029, which is within our bylaw. So the governance recommendation is that we accept Raul Porres for a second chair as trustee. So moved. Okay.
All right, Kristen, okay. I gotta find a better way to do this.
Good, Sarah. You can give me a thumbs up when you're ready.
Okay.
All right. Raul abstaining. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Raul.
Okay, our next vote is on trustee Jill Schaefer for a second term. This term will run for two years, July 2022 to June 2024 due to bylaw limitation on subject consecutive years of service. It is the governance committee's recommendation that we accept Jill Schaefer for a second term running from August. And I will make a motion for that.
Sheila.
Roger, second.
Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Abstain.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Jill, for your continued service.
All right, so now we're going to move into election of board officers. The first is for the board chair. Governance committee recommendation is for Raul Porres to ascend to board chair.
It's so soon.
This will be a two-year term running from July 2022 to June 2024. I would take a motion on Raul as board chair.
So moved by Zach.
Zach, and Roger. Raul, I'm terrified to abstain.
So moved.
Yes.
Jill. Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Raul.
I think let's just say that.
Too late.
All right, our next vote is for the election of board trustee's vice chair and it's my pleasure to recommend Dr. Powell for the position of vice chair. This would be two-year term running from July 2022 to June 2024. And it is the governance committee recommendation to elect Dr. Powell vice chair. I'm taking a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Laura. Second, by Laura. Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Oh, I mean, I abstain.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension.
So next is the election of the board secretary. And it's my pleasure as governance chair to say that the governance committee recommends that we retain the services of Jill Schaefer for another term. That would be a two-year term running from July 2022 to June 2024. Do I have a motion on accepting Jill as secretary? So moved.
Roger, second. Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Abstain.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Jill.
Congratulations. So the final election will be for the board trustee of the treasurer. It is the governance committee recommendation that Robert Jarrett be the head treasurer. That would be a two-year term, June 2022 to, I'm sorry, July 2022 to June 2024. I have a motion on election of treasurer. Motion.
Second. Motion by Kristen and second by Raul. Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Laura. Zach.
Yes.
I abstain. Motion passes with one extension. Sheila, thank you for leading us through our officer and trustee election nominations. Next up, I would like to, so Ben Hemsworth reached out to me and saying that development chair was too much at this point in time. And so he stepped aside by continuing as both a member of the development committee and as a trustee. And so at this point, I'd like to nominate Maura Webster as chair of the development committee to be a one-year term, telling her the rest of the year. Take your motion.
Motion it.
So.
And then Sheila. Roger. Raul, yes. Samini.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bella.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes. Yes.
Laura.
A.
Zach.
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one extension. Congratulations, Raul. Thank you for taking up your post here. And Ben, thank you for your service. Thank you, Laura. Let me, that is all votes. I missed anything or votes. Now I'd like to pass the time to Ellen as our exec, for our executive director report.
Do we have any votes in the second?
The calendar.
Calendar is, we're going to discuss the calendar and board chair. It's not, it's not a vote.
Okay. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. All right. I'm gonna share my screen with you. There the heck is that? There we go. All right, well, welcome out, everyone. This is a unusual setup that we have here tonight, but we are making lemonade out of lemons. That's my lesson for today. And here we, we all are in different places, but, but together once again. So our report overview, I have some summertime thank yous, some board thank yous, as we heard tonight, that we have some folks that are, are, their terms are coming to an end. And just a, a quick update about graduation, if you weren't able to make it. We also have our final report back from DEES on the mid-cycle review. And the results there, and then a quick building update, just a, a timeline, and then a little bit of razzle-dazzle time as we head into the summer. So we had our, we had our barbecue at the Hudson Elks last week, and it was great to see everyone. Some folks brought their, their children and things along as well. It was windy, 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 but we had a, we had a lovely time. And once again, just want to express our appreciation for all of our staff, our teachers, counselors, our administrative team, staff. And, and obviously, the school doesn't exist or move forward without our board of trustees. So just, we thank you for, for, you know, sticking by us and supporting us during a year that, that really was, was trying at times. You know, when we, we started the year, we've gone through a lot of different phases with, with the virus, we had the AMSA flu. You know, we had a number of challenges, and each time we, we rose to the challenge, came together. I know everyone is relieved that the summer is here. And so I wish all those who are listening a wonderful, restful summer and, and get ready for next year. We've got a big year coming up ahead of us. So thank you to everyone. And then another special thank you to Liz and Kristen. You know, Liz joined, I remember when Liz was our parent rep, but back in 2015, when I came to AMSA. She was the parent rep, became a full trustee in 2017. She has faithfully served as the chair of the education committee, a committee that also went through multiple changes during the early years when Anders and I began to work with the board. And, um, Kristen, the same thing, she came on thinking that she was going to be a member, um, of the, of the, the finance committee. Um, next thing you know, she found herself being the treasurer, um, and the chair of the finance committee. And, you know, she really, she really stepped up and, uh, Kristen doesn't have, um, a child at, at Amso. Um, so her commitment to the school was, was completely based on, on her really, um, wanting to help us to succeed, especially in the area of finance. So I, I thank you both very, very much. Um, you know, Liz will, will miss the souls around the school. I'm sure that you won't be going far as Ethan heads off to graduation as well. And Kristen, I've heard that you have volunteered to continue to, to support us in a consulting role if, if we need you. So thank you both, um, very, very much for your, your years of service. Um, also, you know, I'm not going to say goodbye to Roger yet because Roger's not going anywhere, but he also is in a situation where we had a, um, a board chair in place and, um, and it, it, it wasn't a good time for that person and Roger was the vice chair and suddenly, uh, Roger was, was really put on the spot and he jumped in, um, as he always, always does and, and kept us rolling for the last five years, I guess. First as vice chair and then four years as chair. So Roger, thank you once again. Not going to say any goodbyes yet because I know we've got you around for a couple more years. We had our graduation class of 2022. Um, it was a wonderful, um, wonderful graduation. Once again, it was an absolutely beautiful night. The weather couldn't have been any more perfect, really cooperated with us, um, this year. Uh, we had graduation on Friday, June 12th. We did it in the back of Four Kicks. Um, you know, probably not the most popular, um, decision, but when all is said and done, every time we've done it, parents have come up to us afterwards and said, what a, what a great, um, experience it was. Some of the kids really like it because they feel like Four Kicks is kind of part of our home. And, um, and, and I think it always surprises everyone at what a lovely event. Um, and I, I shout out to Lynn McCluskey, who, you know, we wouldn't, she does, she handles all the events, start to finish. She's so organized. We call her the Lynn the closer McCluskey. Um, she, she gets it all done and she had a committee of folks that helped her, including the senior advisors, Bethany Bartolini-Seppe, Aaron McAdams, Kristy, uh, Jakowski was, uh, was there as well. Um, just the, the whole team and Mike Noraki and, um, Amanda Sensei, our, our vice principal, had their hands, you know, heavily into graduation. And I will say that at the end, Mike looked at his, his clock, his watch and said, an hour and 15 minutes. Um, so it was, it was efficient. It was awesome. All right. And so a little bit about our mid-cycle review is, uh, you may remember several years ago, um, we went through a, a re-chartering. So the Department of Education comes in, they look at the, they look at all of our work and we were renewed, our charter was renewed for five years, which is the regular cycle. Um, and it was renewed without conditions. And that was the first time that had happened in Amso's history and we were very, very excited about it. Um, up two and a half, two, three years in, they come back again and they do a, a mid-cycle review. So they pick a few things that they want to take a look at. Um, some of you were involved in the, in the governance, um, in the governance conversations with, with the folks from DEES that came out. And they looked at basically these four areas. They looked at our mission and key design elements, access and equity. Um, and then supports for all learners and they also reviewed, reviewed, um, governance. It's a couple of things that we need to work on. Um, there's more details in the report. I will send it out to all of you. And you can take a look at some of the, the, um, action items that they would like, uh, the board to, to work on. But overall, um, we met the criteria of what they were, what they were looking for, for this visit. And I think, you know, one of the things that, that we're most proud of, um, is, you know, under criteria in one, right? It's on mission, our key design elements. And it says, "In year 17, school stakeholders share a common understanding of the school's mission. The school is operating in a manner that is faithful to its mission and is implementing its key design elements, particularly a celebration of academic knowledge and an appreciation of learning." Um, and I think for, for those of us, um, who know and, and love this school so much, that, that, that's a huge statement there. That, that's telling us that we are living our mission, we're living our core values. Um, and, and our kids are, are learning, right? And then when you look at, um, that's obviously a topic, something we've been working, um, on in its, in its states here, that we seek to ensure access to programs and equity for all students eligible to attend the school. School provides information to the public regarding nondiscriminatory enrollment practices and it, and it goes on. Um, says, you know, saying that we are translating into languages that we need to, that we are retaining our students. And, um, then you may remember that Anthony Montesian came to talk about suspensions and discipline and it says that, um, that our, our rate of in-school and out-of-school suspensions were, were consistently below where it needed to be. So all these, these factors, supports for all, for all learners. So this once again was a celebration. Um, time for, for us and it's so important for Amso to continue to work to keep our, our charter clean and so that it can be renewed time and time and time again. Uh, and certainly one of, um, you know, the directives that we should be talking to, uh, those who applied for my position, um, to make sure that that is also a priority for, for them as well to lead this work because we will be heading in, um, to another review in 2024. So, uh, quick building updates and this is a very, uh, this is a very loose estimate, but this is what they are aiming for right now. Um, the schematic design, um, and the estimates, once the schematic designs are drawn, very detailed drawings, then it goes to estimators and they will, they're working on that now and that will take place now through about September. Then there's a design development phase and estim, and then it goes back to the estimators again. That'll be September to November. Then they will be bringing, um, a design to the board for approval sometime November, December, time range. And then all the permitting, permitting starts, uh, this is with the, the city. And that's, uh, December, December through March. It's an extensive period of time. And they hope to break ground in April is the target right now. Um, and then the completion, uh, for, for the building is, uh, one, about one year. So sometime in the spring of 2024. Um, obviously we know as we've gone through this, this process over the last year that these are subject to shift. Um, I just, I, I asked Bob Baldwin to, to give me some type of a timeline that I could present to you tonight. Um, and this is, um, this is what we're looking at right now. These, as you can tell, once again, these are the little, the little photos that I, I kind of, uh, snap when, um, we're having our Tuesday meetings. This is the latest, um, and these are just concept drawings. These are just, do you like this? Where might you like this? Do you want to shift this? What about the size of the room? Um, so these are just concept drawings. This is these, they would almost consider these kind of back of the envelope type drawings as, as far as an architect is concerned. Um, but it kind of gives you an idea of the first floor. Um, and how many rooms that they're looking at there. These rooms are all about the size that they are in the 165 building in that 700, um, range. You can see that the restrooms have been, have been placed on the far, um, well, I would call it the left-hand side of the drawing on this level one drawing. Um, and there's a small classroom there. Someday when you put the gymnasium, um, onto that back wall, that you'll probably lose that classroom there and it will become, um, a connector, um, into the gymnasium once that's, once that is added on. Um, on the second floor, we, we purpose, purposefully put the labs on the second floor so that, um, once again, when the gymnasium goes on someday and you need overflow, changing rooms, um, you know, for a play and you need costume areas and things that, that that would be more suitable to these kind of generic classrooms on the first floor. And then on the second floor, that's where, um, the science labs, uh, would be as well. And obviously you can see the, the restrooms and there's restrooms, there's certain number of restrooms you need for, um, how many people they expect to be up there and, and that's all, all to code. So once again, the, these are subject to change. This was just a meeting that we had this week and they were showing me, um, some of the ideas that they've come up with. Uh, these, these look pretty, pretty good. Right now, this is 21,000, 700 square feet. But obviously on cost at this point, um, where you would cut cost potentially is, is making that smaller, right? Um, and we will, we will cross that bridge when we got, when we get there. We haven't gotten there yet. But I did want to give you, um, an idea of, of what they're thinking about right now. And now a little bit of razzle-dazzle time. So just wanted to point out, and I'm not sure, um, if, if you are aware of this or not, but the, but Amso also has a literary and a creative magazine. It's, it's, um, put together, it's, it's done as a club. It's Carolyn Russo, one of our wonderful English teachers. Uh, she leads this and it's really a wonderful, I, I put the link in here. Um, it's a, it's a wonderful display of just really how talented our students are. Um, it, there's art, there, there's photos, there's poems, that there's short stories. And, um, and it's, it's really a wonderful selection, um, and giving students an opportunity to express themselves in many ways. Um, and I, I love the quill. We, we love to, uh, to see it each year. And if you're interested, you can, um, go onto the Facebook page, the link is there, or you can access it right here if you'd like to look through it. It's actually, it's, it's delightful. It's just beautiful, beautiful work. Um, also just, you know, wanted to talk to a little bit about some of the work that our Leaders for Tomorrow, um, does now. Mark Vidal is the advisor for Leaders of Tomorrow. There's about 130 to 150 students that participate in this. And, um, it's all around service, service in our community. These students, Mark has them hopping. They are all over our core towns. Um, this is a project that they do where our students are down. We've adopted, um, Kane Elementary School. The other, um, Mark has worked with the other high schools in, in the city as well, and they have also adopted elementary schools. We've done this for a number of years now, um, but it's, it's still going and it's wonderful. But you can see our kids going into the elementary school and they're, they're teaching them how to make a catapult. Um, they, they've done other projects, um, as well, but this one looks particularly, um, particularly fun. And, uh, I just once again want to thank Mark Vidal for this initiative. It's been, um, a wonderful opportunity for, for us to share our students and, and their passion for STEM, um, into the elementary schools. And it's, it's been, really they've been ambassadors for Amso, uh, within the public school system that we're very, very proud of our, of our leaders for tomorrow. And, um, thanks to the PTO, we had a wonderful field day this week. We, we, it was kind of a, a strange calendar where, uh, we ended up back at school on Tuesday for a half a day. And, um, traditionally the PTO has put on for years now and, um, a, on the last day of school, a field day. And you can see some of the pictures. They do all the, the blow up, um, um, whatever, whatever you call them, like the bouncy houses and things like that, that Four Kicks, um, owns. And you can see the students doing various activities there and they just, I think it was a wonderful day, um, and they were all very, very, very happy. One second. All right. Sorry. I'm getting, getting some, getting some background noise there and unfortunately I, I, um, oop, I need silence behind me here. And why am I not? There we go. Okay. So another one of, of Mark Vidal's, um, amazing programs that, that he runs is this M sum, M 20 summit. And this is part of Mark, a number of years ago, boy, it was pre-COVID, four or five years ago, Mark started a, a group called the Marlboro STEM, um, Council. And all of the different, um, schools are involved in this, also the city of Marlboro and some of the area, um, corporations as well. And so this year, the event that they put together was, it was called the M 20 Summit and they've done this once before. It happened, um, right before COVID. And then of course we had COVID for a couple of years and so Mark kicked it off and, and got it, got it going again. And you can see here, we had a visit from our, our mayor, it's Mayor Vigent, uh, their author. And also the commissioner of education, um, Jeff Riley, uh, that is, is Jeff in the, in the khaki pants. And it was really a, an amazing opportunity. One of the things that, that drew it, it so much attention to this particular event um, is that it was the, the first time and perhaps the, the, the only time in a state that all the schools in a certain town got together and collaboratively created a program that our students are all involved in. So this involves Amso and I, and I want to say once again, this is an initiative. This is Mark Vidal's baby. He created this uh, along with, with this STEM council, which he, he also, um, started. And Marlboro High School, Assabett, their technical school, and Innovation Academy, which is a private school. So you've got a charter school, a district school, vocational school, and a private school, all bringing a team of four students together. You can see those are our four students there, um, at the bottom of the page. But everyone brought four students and then they, they worked on, on, um, a, a project. This was a green project. And they looked at Marlboro and they were all given maps and they had to, um, make recommendations on different ways to make Marlboro more green. And so, uh, Mayor Vigent ca, got up in front of all the kids and said that he wants all the plans sent to him so he can review them. Um, I thought that was a, a really nice touch. Uh, we also, we had a, we partnered with a number of companies with this too. Uh, in the center photo, you can see, um, it's one, one of our parents, um, last name's Lauren Todd from Amoresco. And she, um, she taught the students all about solar, um, energy. And she was also one of the judges. So we had a, a number of judges from different companies also. And, um, my cat is here too. And, um, anyway, it was just a wonderful collaborative event and the kids all got medals and things at the end. But if you see the picture of all the adults together, you've got, um, the woman, uh, on the, in the white outfit on the far, far right is from the city of Marlboro. Um, and the next woman, she is the chief of staff at the Department of Education, Mark Vidal. You got Dan Riley, he's the principal of Marlboro High School. Um, Jeff Riley, who's our, our commissioner, um, Arthur Vigent, myself, Mike Noraki. The next woman is, she is the deputy commissioner at the, um, at the Department of Education. And then Anders Lewis, Dr. Lewis is with, with me as well. Um, so a wonderful event and, um, the kids, I think, had a great time. So, um, want to just remind everyone that the third annual Amso golf tournament is coming up. It is the 15th of April. Um, as of the date of, of this advertisement here, there are only 10 foursomes left. Um, so if you're still interested, you, you really should, um, should consider playing golf with us that day. Uh, Dr. Lewis, um, claims he's going to teach me how to golf this summer and that I'm going to play in a foursome with him, Peter Proo and Steve Smith. So we'll see. Thank goodness it's playing off the best ball because I figure if I can get mine to go at least like a couple inches, they can play off of that. So go Eagles, um, happy summer. I think we're all relieved, um, that, that we made it and we will rejuvenate over the summer and get ready for next year. Any questions?
I have a comment. So in addition, I just want to give a shout out to Mark Vidal also, um, you know, in addition to helping other schools, um, the leaders of tomorrow do and have helped the local Amso, Amso community and the kids also. Um, back in 2012, when my husband passed away. Sorry. They, they were so supportive. They sent Abby like dozens and dozens of like just awesome notes and personalized cards and they showed up to the wake and they're just a great, great group. All right. I really appreciated that.
Thank you, Jill. Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I don't know too many people whose heart is, is as big as, as Mark's is and, um, the kids and the way that he works with them and the things that he gets them involved with. Um, Clinton, they, that those kids are very well-known in Clinton. They go down to the, um, senior center. They do all kinds of work down there. Uh, they pick up trash. They, during COVID, they visited, um, and they did like drive-by um, visits to nursing homes, car drives to nursing homes. Um, Mark has endless ideas and these kids are very, very committed. Um, they really, uh, learn such leadership and, um, yeah, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful part of our community. Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. I'll turn the time back to, um, to Roger again.
Thank you, Ella. Great report and everything that you do. Zach, back to the round report.
All right. Hello, everyone. Uh, first things first, I'm going to try to not cough. Um, please forgive me if I start coughing out of nowhere. Uh, the reason I'm not there is that I have COVID and I'm trying really hard not to cough. Uh, with that said, I have one and a half-ish update this evening. Uh, before I start it, I do want to say, all teachers are well-aware that scheduling at Amso is a Herculean and possibly Sisyphean task. The, the scheduling team does some The scheduling team does some incredible work balancing the amount of class sizes, subjects, schedule permutations that are thrown at them. They are fantastic. They do great work. That being said, some teachers did approach me today with concerns regarding specifically the allocation of classrooms. Many teachers have to share classrooms at AMSA. That's something we all understand. We have, you know, a limited amount of space, and it's just the way it has to work. These teachers were concerned that some teachers seem not to move as much as other teachers in the same departments, in the same buildings, especially when you look at a trend over several years. They're requesting that the administration make sure the amount of classroom movement is equitable and/or that there's more transparency regarding how those decisions are made regarding classroom assigning. Building off of that, there was also a concern that they raised that some teachers can come to think of a classroom they teach all their classes in as their room. This can cause a lot of friction when another teacher comes in to find the desks have moved, or all the whiteboards are filled with writing, and that teacher needs to change something for their class. These can make really difficult situations to navigate. Frustration can happen that really can just be very difficult. They would also appreciate if there was consistent messaging that all classrooms are shared resources at the school so that that can kind of be ameliorated in some way, shape, or form. That's my one real update for today.
Questions for that? Thank you for your report. Bella, parent representative report.
I have not received any emails or communication from the parent community this month.
Any items that the board wishes to flag or discuss at the table meeting? Either the chair, faculty, or parent board? Next is roll to give us an update on the survey task force report. Is your email okay for me? Good? On line? What's up? Do you guys hear me online?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Should I move? Because as you may have realized by now, I'd rather talk to slide. So the update on the, on the survey task force. As you know, we had some changes to the survey. One of our goals was to increase response rates. We wanted to be east for everybody to respond, both on the staff and family side. So we just recapped some of the changes. Cut it down from two sources you just had in the spring survey. So this is the survey report this year. Next year, we expect it to be the same. What happened and the results out of those changes didn't really seem to make a difference on the response rate. So this is just giving some historical news. The collect you see there, the families that if you remember in 2020, we didn't run the spring survey. But everything else is from the spring survey numbers and response rates. They're pretty flat. And so cutting down the survey size didn't really make that much of a difference. We actually talked a lot about this in the task force, and what else can we do to draw a response. One thing that I actually hadn't realized, now that I'm a parent, like seeing all that books on the other end, is how the email comes. The email doesn't come from AMSA, it comes from Panorama, which is a third party that we use for this survey. We did that on purpose, but the board that set this up first time did that on purpose. One of the reasons for the survey is that we wanted to have, to have an input channel to the board that was heated or collected by a third party that wasn't necessarily the responsibility or under the control of the administration. So that's why it looks like it's something else. And some people might see that, oh, somebody else is sending me a survey. If you don't open the email, you don't realize that it's a survey for AMSA and that it's coming from AMSA. So we noted that, so next time we send the survey, instead of just saying, give us your feedback on the subject line, it should say something like, AMSA, family survey, respond, open this email. So that might be part of why the response rate is okay. But that being said, you know, that's not the only things we talked about. We talked about what other things to do changing the approach. Like I said, the length is significantly affected turnout. We were expecting a higher turnout, but it's the shortest survey. I mentioned the email. We still want to use the third party, so I actually think that, again, we discussed this a little bit. The approach with Panorama is still helpful. We thought there was going to be a cost associated to it that we could reduce. We didn't use Panorama, but it turns out that we actually do like a lot of other services that call it Panorama. The survey is just another key word that has to be something else. So we didn't change that. Just one thing we're considering. The other question is, when's the right time? So we have the fall survey, which we consider a fall survey, and some of the comments we got about that. It's like, well, for new parents, or if you're giving comments about what happened in the previous year, things might have changed. Or if you're a new parent, you don't have experience with the school yet, so you don't really have an opinion to share in the service of the fall is a great time. Then we said, well, we can do it later in the year after the spring, but well, if it's really the end of the year, and if we learn something that we need to change directions on, then it's too late. So, you know, yes, we're going to change it for next full year, but nobody's going to see the effect of that until the next full year. So there's really not a perfect time for the survey. We pretty much included that the spring kind of has kind of the battleground where we do have some feedback on how the school started and have still time to change things. So there wasn't a significant change in that, and again, in the context of trying to have more participation and making more meaning. Also, the fact that this is not the only survey that we sent down, and when I say we, I mean the whole school. So yes, this is the only board-run survey, but administration consistently has found different ways. And with COVID, I think we've proven that to extreme of sending different feedback forms and different ways to collect feedback. There's other channels. So if we were concerned about reducing the time would make people feel that we were not open to receiving feedback. Hopefully, everybody knows that there's more than one way to get in contact with the board and to reach out and share your feedback. Whether or not we ask for it. So part of it is, you know, people will respond less to surveys, more surveys. So with that being said, it wasn't major, any decision to change things dramatically. We decided to share some highlights. If you remember from last month's executive director report, Ellen did share some, some of the positive highlights. We, we actually went through all the, the actual reports from the questions to try to pick some things that were worth bringing up. One thing that we're not going to do today, just because of the timing of when, you know, how much time we actually have to review the comments. For next board meeting, we published, put in the agenda kind of a review of this just to go through the comments. Just because we did get a lot of comments. And again, we, we want to be able to summarize that and get enough time to go through those before we share what we heard from those comments. But let's highlight a couple of things. So one is, and I know we were talking today, we had a board training on fundraising, so we thought this was timely. We had a, before, if you remember, we had a question about family involvement and, you know, how people participate in the community and the school. Asking families if they felt they were participating in any part of the meeting. We changed it to be more specific to fundraising and asking parents, how involved are you? And as you can see, the, the majority kind of gave themselves a rating that if they're assigned to be involved or relaxed, meaning that it was only 9% that were, that felt, considered that were involved in fundraising. But then the question might be, well, maybe they're not involved because we don't give them enough opportunities, or they don't feel they have a way to get involved. But that second question kind of proves the opposite. We said, no, we, we think we have opportunities to get involved. So that's 76% of the parents believe that, that they do have an opportunity to get involved. I guess 20% wasn't sure, you know, because it's a quote unquote saying, I don't know. But it, it's not the opposite. You know, if we had seen that, oh, we're not, nobody's involved in fundraising because they don't know how to, that's different, right? So I think this is also something in the context of the conversation we just had earlier today, so it was worth sharing that. Safety was an important thing in everybody's mind during the last few years with COVID, but also, you know, everything else that's going on in our country. This looks pretty positive. Majority of the parents feel, you know, quite safe, very exceptionally safe in the school. There's a lot of things that go into that word, safety. We, one of the things that we tried was to reduce, we had specific questions before about bullying and drugs. And actually, I think we did keep some of those, but the overall theme of safety, you can come to sort of things. So I think this is encouraging. And then there's other questions that, if you remember from before, we tried to mirror between the family and the staff survey. And it's interesting to see if they're similar or different. One of them is our mission. We used to have a question that said, if we didn't accomplish its mission, or it's doing a good job of accomplishing the mission. We changed it, actually not recently, it's actually a couple of years ago, we said, let's actually state the mission and see how people respond to that. And again, you didn't see that the patterns and the trends are similar between the, the staff and the families. But you see that at least three quarters of the respondents are agree or strongly agree with the fact that we're accomplishing our mission. So this, if this was different, we would have to really, you know, have a hard time justifying all that cream that we got from our, our charter and how much we're sticking to our charter. Because this is what really our charter is and our credibility to find us around, essentially. Policies and enforcement of policies is another common theme. There are still a lot of comments about this from both sides, both from staff and from families, thinking that there's, there's unfair or inconsistent enforcement of some policies. But again, the overall, one of the reasons, and hopefully everybody listening that, that responds to the survey can, can hear this, that when we hear comments from individuals or from, you know, something that's a concern, we also try to look at the overall population to see how many people actually share their perspective, to see how big of a problem something is. And this is something, when you look at the numbers statistically, and again, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't try to make schools better, but statistically, it doesn't look like the majority of the respondents were concerned about the consistency of policy enforcement, the way the questions are phrased. So those were the highlights. And again, I, I kept this short just because we, we kept the survey shorter. We tried to highlight things that were of concern, that, that, you know, maybe there's not a overwhelming majority saying positive things. There's always something to learn from the survey. So I think with the fact that we made it easier to respond shorter, and that we'll continue to do it year over year, having at least one survey will continue to influence what we do and focus on. And I think we, every year, we work with the administration to make sure that we don't leave any comment. And we do our best. We may not achieve the, the results that everybody wants to see, but we do our best to respond to what we hear on the survey. So I don't know if there's anybody else from the survey task force that would like to add to this, or, you know, we have the reports themselves, which we'll share, and I think we'll make that part of the, we put that on the website, but we'll make that part of the documentation from this board meeting. You can see for yourself all the questions and all the details of that. But again, we were just trying to highlight some. You know, Dawn or Zach or Ellen? By the way, I need to thank Lynn, my class teacher, she's always our point of contact with Panorama. Put in more time than anybody else on the task force, making sure that we were, we had what we needed to, to review this. No, she's not on, but she's also part of the task force. Any questions for the task force during the survey? So we'll come back next month. So we have the agenda item for the July meeting. Thank you, Dad, the task force for completing the analysis, giving us initial, initial analysis of these survey results. Time to turn business. Well, first, big thank you to Kristen and to Liz for their many years of service. Kristen for stepping up to be treasurer, surprise. Liz for her many years of service, stepping up to lead the Education Committee. Both can't say no, can't say no, thank yous. Can we give them the floor? Ellen, did you wish to have, have some, did you have a item that you wanted to talk about?
She did.
Reward for service?
She pretty did.
So we might hear it. Ellen, I believe you may have had a reward for service for Liz and Karen.
Yes, except that we were expecting Kristen to be remote this evening. And we know Liz is remote, so Sarah was planning on mailing those out to them. But we, yes, we do have a thank you to, to send. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Bella, I'd like you to introduce, and in this point, give Laura a chance to give herself an introduction to the board, and looking forward to your service on the board in this 2022, 2023 school year.
Okay, I'm just checking to see if Laura's still on.
Yeah, she's there, ready. I gotta see a thumbs up to Laura.
Oh, okay. I guess I don't see her. Oh, there she is. So I actually just met Laura today over the phone. She has been nominated by the PTO. She's an AMSA parent. Obviously, she has two children in the middle school. I am going to turn it over to her. I think we had a nice conversation today. I think her background's going to fit great with, with the board. So I'll just turn it over to her now. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Sorry, I was at a baseball game earlier. I am home now. Yes, my name is Laura Burgess. My older son is going into eighth grade at AMSA, and then I have a younger son Levi, who's been admitted for sixth grade for the fall. I'm very excited to get involved professionally. I'm an assistant dean over at Clark University, and I've been at Clark for just over 15 years. So as I was telling Bella, education in some ways is my life between work and, and my kids. And so I'm excited to get involved a little bit more with AMSA, with the PTO, and to connect more with parents. So I'm looking forward to what will come in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for volunteering and looking forward to working with you. Thank you. Couple of, couple of quick announcements. There was a trustee survey that was sent out by Jill. At least a nine mail box arrived on June 8th, so take a look for, look for the title. It says, the board needs your feedback. Please complete that. So when would you like that mailed up as soon as possible?
Yeah, so we were supposed to get it back by yesterday so that I could do a report quickly tonight. However, there's four people, I won't name them, that have not submitted it, so I can't give even an overview tonight. Except the trend I've seen is looking down unless these four people can boost the trend back up. So, but once we get these four last responses, I can put a report together, and then I will be able to present that at the July meeting. I'll reach out individually via email to the floor.
To the unnamed.
To the unnamed, yes.
To the unnamed. Next up, there is an email from, from these dated six, these nine mailboxes dated June 14th to complete your financial disclosure. And Sarah, do you need a paper copy of that?
I do not. I'm able to download them from the site.
So just, just complete the, complete the registration, and you don't need to, Sarah does not need a hard copy or soft copy of that. Yeah, and Sarah, in this case, I don't mind being called out if you're missing mine, but I think that you got mine.
Yeah, you did send it.
I just want to make sure.
There'll be a few things that they're looking for, but that's.
And Dawn, I'd like you to announce the ED stakeholder search committee participants.
Sure. Hi, everyone, again. We have the executive director search committee to announce tonight. Anders has been very instrumental all along in all of the processes so far. I just want to give him a shout out. We were looking to create a diverse stakeholder task force to work with the search firm. We had talked at our last Board of Trustees meeting about trying to get cert, you know, making sure we had broad representation between parents and faculty and trustees and administration. We ended up saying that nine or 10 people would be an ideal size for the committee, just to remind everyone. Although it was really interesting, all of the search firms we spoke to said five to seven was ideal. So I will say kudos to us for being very open to having a large committee and making sure we have enough representation, that we try to get as much transparency and trust in the process. You know, this should be a very straightforward process that folks feel good about. So just going off our last meeting, we sent out, Anders sent out sort of a call to action for folks to volunteer. We had a very strong showing, I think, between faculty and parents to join the committee. And if folks want, I can announce that committee tonight. These folks have already been notified. We've also notified the folks that we did not select, just because we had so many to pick from and so many great candidates to join the committee. So representing lower school, upper school parents, we got Juliana Farrell, so apologies if I mispronounce anything. She had served on the community council and had, is a parent of a sixth grader and an 11th grader. So that's great there, both schools. Similarly, we, another parent we got was Linda Velasquez. In addition to being a parent of an eighth and 11th grader, 20 years HR experience, including it over at Bose. So that was something I'm sure will be really great for our committee to make use of. In terms of faculty teachers, for representing lower school teachers, Mr. Prue, Peter Prue, who's also our DEI coordinator, history teacher, sixth grade teacher, and also ninth grade world history and AP teacher. So God love him for having more time to add a committee to his schedule. We also, for upper school, have Joe Benjiani, who I am told is called Benji, and I'm very much looking forward to getting to know him. 10th grade chemistry teacher, and also on the all-world scheduling team, according to Mr. Prescott. Department Chair Marty Richardson, the English department chair. So these are all folks, being new to Amso as I am, these are all folks who are new to me, and I'm just very excited to meet them. From the counseling department, we have Sarah Pantano. She has been at Amso since 2007. And then just a reminder from the Board of Trustees, it's myself, Raoul, Samini, and Anders, representing sort of administration in the central office. So 10 folks, I think we have a great team. I think with schedules, you know, we won't always have all 10 at every meeting, but we will, this is the group that will represent Amso stakeholders as best they can and work with the search committee to find some great candidates. So I can answer questions, or I can stop talking.
Questions for Laura? Who were the last three people? It was Anders, Dawn, Samini, and who else?
Raoul.
Raoul, sorry.
That's okay. And Sarah, if it's helpful, I can just forward you the document.
And you can do that?
I should.
But I think I have them, but just spelling and everything be good.
Yeah, I'll forward it at the end of the meeting.
Just one comment to everybody that was in the board, whether you got selected or not. This is not the only way you're being added on, but before, there are committees, there are forums, there are, you know, we talked about the survey, there's many ways where you can draw your feedback, whether it's from the selection process itself, or for anything else. But for anybody that are moving forward, thank you for taking that step. I know it's not easy. It is a big commitment, so the next step that we have is we kick this up, is to make sure everybody understands the time commitment, how you, you know, getting together and going through interviews and reviewing materials from the search firm and all that would have a big impact on Amso. So everybody should understand, through the selection process, making sure that everybody heard this, but I'll repeat it. So it will be a big time commitment for everybody that's part of that. So thank you for taking that step, stepping up to taking that commitment, because it's not a my own.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the volunteers and all those that wrote letters to, for candidates. Finally, we're going to set the board schedule that was attached to the minutes, attached to this agenda. And just to confirm the July and August dates, I think we've talked through, I think the dates that we'd settled out were the ones we had settled for July and August, that said, which was, I think it's July 28th for our July meeting, and for August, it was... I think it was also my last, it was like, August 25th, and then April 25th. So same those dates. And the committees, I think, for the summer committee meetings, I'll leave that to you to meet as needed. You have the committee date scheduled for during the school year. Questions on the calendar?
Well, I guess, we don't need to decide now, but are we going to be person virtual in the next board meeting?
That's a good question. First, we need guidance from the state.
Oh, right.
The state's supposed to announce by July 15th. Current rules, which is expired then, so. I will need that as a challenge for your role.
A handoff.
I would expect we'd give, well, we can't predict the future, but I would say if possible, we would probably go back to remote, it's the default. Any questions to the chairs? Okay, on the committee reports, development committee, you good?
Yeah, good evening. So we met this week, actually, just a couple of days ago, and it was a good meeting. We got an update from Maura and from Ellen on the progress around the capital campaign committee. And then everything was going good, and we got the feedback on the advancements and the new collections that they made. We also talked about the transition, as we announced earlier tonight, between myself and Maura from the chair role of our development committee. And then from there, I think we, you know, just discussed some of the ideas we could have, or ideas around the training we received from our consultant Betsy today, and just gave some feedback to Ellen. I think that meeting went pretty well today, too. So overall, a quick committee meeting and capital campaign was the big updates, which has been going along very well, and I think we have some good momentum from the training we had from Betsy today. So that's all I have to report.
Questions for Ben and for the development committee? Liz, education?
Okay, so the education committee met this week as well. We actually focused on the ED search, and I will actually be passing along some very good information that we gathered at the meeting this week to Raoul and Dawn, just to kick off, as they kick off the next phase with the working on the search committee. And we gathered quite a bit of information. We actually have some, we had some education committee members who were around for the last search, so they actually were able to provide some good guidance as well. So we'll be sending that over to Raoul and Dawn and their team so that they can utilize that information going forward. Any questions?
Questions for Liz? Thank you for the education reporting, and thank you for your time leaving our education committee.
Thank you.
Governor, too?
So government's met a couple of weeks ago, and we are continuing to work on our processes for onboarding new board members. The other thing that kind of came up as we went into this transition, which was the first one for me, I think, as governor's chair, was just looking at codifying and memorializing our process for electionist officers and making sure that we have a transparent and open and available procedure for anyone who's interested in those positions. So more to come on that, because we're just working on how to draft that to best of course. So that's kind of my wrap. Thank you.
Questions for you? Kristen, financial board?
So we have our reports are, I think you said, agenda. We had a few robust meetings this month, everyone's hearing. Tuition is, and the financial survey were available to plan, consistent with prior periods. Hannah worked on some new projects for finance committee, mostly related to the building plan and financial estimates for that. So she looks and works regularly, consults on the building, track reports. Only $8,000 was spent this period. The building model affordability plan is in process, and she and I are going to work on that actually after some vacation, just trying to be on the ball. And then she also worked with the team, with Eric, on a capital plan, which was actually really great. She put together multi-year capital plan around the school and some of the funds that are going to be necessary to do the drop on my building. This is in addition to the costs associated with the new facilities that are being built. So it's a great foundation. We're forecasting more of the long-range plan associated with the building and the school itself. So it's a really great model that I hope I can live on past my days here, because massive class, both finance, teachers, everything that matters.
Just saying.
And so I also didn't say anything earlier, but I just want to thank everyone for the experience, our Nodessa, enjoying, I had some friends and students here, and had observed firsthand how great the students were, came out, and it is an awesome school, and I wish my kids to be part of it. So that's, not that my kids aren't fabulous, but that's cool that they have exams.
Questions for Kristen? Thank you again for your report and all the work in finance.
Thank you, yes.
So we have one item, one item flagged for discussion from public speak, which was the Disney trip.
Yes, I, I'm gonna just share my understanding on that, and I think Rebecca's gonna come in. Okay, no, so, and it's just general, again, all I can do is share my understanding. I don't think I can offer a solution, which is unfortunate, but that's the way it is. But here's my understanding. Traditionally, and I'm a new parent, so my daughter is in seventh grade, so I actually, up until now, I've been a divorce and non-parent. And so my experience with traditions or the things that happen in the school that everybody seems to vary a bit. So that's why I say I can only share my understanding, but I'm sure others in the board have a better understanding of the impact of changing the way things have been done or things have been done in the past. But I also have some understanding of weather or dust, or sort of dusting, how much we can influence that. So I'm just gonna say things as I understand that may be wrong, and hopefully others from the board can correct me by saying that it's not correct. The Disney trip was a tradition, something that was put together by the school in collaboration with the PTO. Is that correct? Correct. So.
It was not, it was never connected to the PTO.
Right. So it was a tradition, it was a tradition of the school office. And to change, you know, for whatever reason, this period that they had. No, it's not gonna happen more for, okay. So the petitions for the 2023 classroom, okay, okay, I'll listen. So it is something, as I understand it, an operational issue. And I don't, my understanding, again, from a policy perspective, or things that the board influences, it's not stated in any policy governance or requirement or anything that we can make decisions about. And one of the things that I've been very cautious with since I started on the board, because I know there was some history in the past that created a lot of situations within this school that were gone after, for the bigger picture and for the mission of this school, is when the board starts getting into those operational aspects of this school that pertain to the administration of the school. Of course, we govern that. If there's anything that on the operation that we think strays from our charter or the mission of the school, or the academic rigor, or the academic results that we need to achieve as the school, then we take action, to resolve those. Anything that's outside of that is in the purview, and we defer that and delegate that to the administration. So again, my understanding, which may be wrong, is that the Disney trip, among many other operational things, are outside of what the board can dictate or ask the administration or change anything on that decision the administration has to make. Which means that any other of our opinions about whether the Disney trip was a good thing or a tradition that should be continued, can only be shared as that as an opinion. So I just want to say that to make sure that if I'm saying anything wrong, it can be corrected, what the role of the board is for resolving this or answering to the petition, because I think the key words are petition. So a petition needs to be heard, it needs to be acknowledged, and I understand because of the tradition and because of the change, that is something that there will be always somebody, will be a group that will not agree with the decision, there might be a group that agrees with the decision, but we can only accept it and listen to it, but I don't know how much action we can take on changing the decision of the administration. And the administration has the authority to make that decision. And I don't know, again, I'm not familiar with the tradition of what impact it has on the class of 2023 and beyond. From an academic perspective, I'm not sure if there is an impact, kind of academic. So that, I guess, it's also a discussion, seeing what else can be changed, but from my understanding, the administration made a decision. And we as a board, we think that impacts anything that we govern, can change us. That's my comment, again, I'm just sharing my own.
I would agree that this is not a decision, it's a totally administrative decision, it is not a board-level decision. It has been a tradition at the school in the past, and the administration has chosen that it not continue, and be replaced by a different trip. Yeah. I mean, in concurrence of it, it is not a board-level decision to be modified, or to change.
I think, too, a minute, I want to add, I appreciate, Raoul, you saying that, like, obviously, we want to, right, like, we're here to listen, and it's hard to not have the ability, the ability or the charter to have impact on things, right? I think we all have to crawl, you're a new parent, I've been a parent for a while, I have students in the class of 2023. I think there's a number of different feelings, opinions, et cetera. And so it is a tough one, and I just wanted to acknowledge your, that's not to use words for other things, of that, you know, sort of issue. And I don't know what, what could be done, if there were something different to be done, right?
Well, so I, I mean, I guess we could get creative, but I don't know if that's, at this point, I hope. So the trip could still happen without the school, like, administration board. So I don't know, again, I'm not familiar with the details on resources from the school, or, you know, any budgeting implications or anything like that, but that's why I asked if it was a PTO. But that's why I asked if it was a PTO activity. It could be, we could find ways to make it happen through a different way. It's also, I think, a liability for the school. Because it's a school advantage. You know, we need to make sure we're taking risks where there's a payoff. And again, if it's absolutely the mission, the academic aspect of the school, then it's worth taking a risk. If not, then it's administration's fault to mitigate that risk. But again, I know it's been happening for years, so what changed? I guess it's a fair question to ask, but...
May I actually say something on this? And I have no skin in the game on this, so I feel like I can say this. But I've been here since the second year. And this trip didn't come in until a few years after that, because our first graduating class was 2011. But for as long as it's been a thing, there has always been, whether it was known or not, but there was always that question about liability. It was always a, should we or shouldn't we? Every year, every year, there was a problem. So I don't think it was a new thing to finally make a decision. I think COVID didn't help. I think liabilities didn't help and all of that. But it has always been a controversy, at least within admin, do we, don't we, or whatever? So I think the conversation wasn't new, the decision was this time, I think.
Definitely. Thank the parent for coming forward and raising the issue.
Definitely.
That is part of the purpose of public speak, to surface issues to the board and where this discussed is. Clearly, the consensus of the board is that this is an administrative matter and it's not something that is a board decision and there is. For completing this, we have the governance committee and the complaint process as well. If you feel that something is, some other issue is, needs, I'm struggling forward to. Maybe you can help me out as far, that we do have an official, in addition to public speak and other vehicles, we do have, is to feel that something is not relevant to code or are missing our obligations to charter. There is a official complaint process and if someone needs to, they contact us to the governance chair. Anything else in the talk? Thank you. Meeting wrap up. Survey of action items. Sarah, we have, I believe we had a couple, we had the survey. We had the board evaluation, the confidence that was pushed in July.
That was the self-assessment?
Yeah, board self-assessment and the results from that will split the July meeting.
Yeah. And then the survey.
The survey, the results will be in July. Is there other extended information during the meeting?
No, I don't think so. Let me just check. Nope. Nope.
I do want to add a comment. If anybody had any doubts about what a hybrid model would feel like, you probably have a better idea now and you can make your own assessment whether it's tricky or not. I do want to thank Mr. Pinkle, that not only set up the room for a very complicated thing, but has been running around with a microphone and his speakerphone, trying to make sure that everybody can hear each other. So thank you for that.
Erica, she's on vacation and she's like, how'd it go?
Still going.
So hopefully everybody around here is going to remember. I did the first half remotely. I gotta say it's hard because the microphone's in the river. So hopefully, we don't have to lose off of it.
Oh, God.
I think I'll take that as part of the, you can give a thanks for this. So we collected our candidate items. Do you have any other action items? So from the previous calendar, we have the self-assessment, the governance report on that. We are, Liz and Raoul, myself are working with Ellen in regards to the evaluation process sometime in the next month or so. You will receive an ED evaluation survey.
You and Liz, did you say?
So governance and I are working with Ellen in regards to the evaluation process. The board members will receive, as they have done in past years, a survey for the ED's assessment and we'll be, we're working on that through this hour.
I don't know if this is to be mentioned and thrown out there, but we need a new head committee chair. So I'm just throwing it out there if anybody's interested or, no. This was the only board participant in that committee, if I'm not mistaken, right? So saying, if you want to influence, we need that's what we do every day here in the school and the mission of the school. Now's your chance.
Please come to the front for a moment. I'm the chair if you are interested in chairing the education committee. And I'm trying to get in contact with you in regards to if we have any executive session minutes to review. I think we're all set. Meeting assessment beyond hybrid meetings are really, really hard.
More to the question, do we want to add, this is probably time to start a little bit longer, but do we want to add a capital campaign update as we move forward to the board meeting? I would think that that's probably, as we're starting to ramp up, it really felt, you know, it'd be helpful to kind of give highlights, maybe, of, you know, where we're at. And to that end, I had spoken with 85% of the board and 85% of the board is 100% committed to giving and has committed to against to capital campaigns. I just want to thank everyone and that will go to speak to the remaining 15% of them.
I'm assuming that's the same thing, but I think I mentioned this in the earlier session with Betsy, that it seems that the capital campaign committee has done a lot of things that is worth sharing, the tools and assets that we have to use to draw a support for a capital campaign.
So there's going to be lots of talk, lots of action now coming out as opposed to the behind-the-scenes stuff that's going on.
So Sarah, please capture that as a agenda item for July.
Not just for July, but as an ongoing agenda item.
July and ongoing. That'll be a standing agenda, just like the committee, maybe it's part of the government committee.
Okay.
I'm liking it as a separate report, just to raise its visibility.
Better than those pitches.
Other thoughts on meeting assessments? A special thank you to Sarah for taking up our minutes and providing me my lovely home hall notes to keep us on track. How was that? Ready for any other board business that I missed on 24, on two rates? See you then. And what's your adjournment, Maura? Second from Sheila.
That was, that was fast.
Raoul?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Sheila? Dawn?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Jill? Kristen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And one extension. Meeting is complete. Thank you, everybody.